Myself here. Morning, everybody.
Hi, everyone.
Get it again real quick.
Okay, I'm going to apologize right up front here and reiterate that I have no Wi-Fi. So I'm conducting this meeting with my phone and I can only see three of you at the same time. So if I neglect to call on somebody, I apologize upfront. Because I can't see everybody all at the same time on the tiny little iPhone, so.
What happened to your Wi-Fi?
Good, that's a great question. Would you please call Spectrum and find out for me? Because it's real, it was spotty all day yesterday, it'll be fine. And then this morning, like, no, no internet connection, my computer or Carlos. So all these devices, no connection, but oh, well, we'll go from there. All right.
I can't hear anybody.
We can hear you, Ken.
I can hear you fine, Ken.
Nothing?
Well, we should say something so you could have something to hear. Yeah.
How about now, Ken? Is this, can you hear us?
Oh.
You got it. Hey, my first meeting smooth as silk.
All right, Linda's joining right now.
Great.
Wow, where is she?
Good morning, Linda.
Good morning. Sorry for the delay. I couldn't, I couldn't find the link. Too many emails to go through.
Can I tell you, you are not alone in technical issues this morning. The mayor cannot hear us and I don't have any Wi-Fi, so I'm on my phone. So as I mentioned earlier, if you raise your hand, and I don't see, my apologies. I can't see gallery view. I can only see right now Genevieve, Liz, and you right now. So anyone else, that's all that matters, right? That's anyone else I can't see.
You know, you have the important ones.
All right, well, so is the mayor back on? Can you hear us?
He is on, but I'm not sure if he can hear us.
Okay, should we proceed or should we wait? What's the consensus?
Give him a few minutes, a minute or two. Because I can see that he's connected. Connecting to audio, so what?
Looks good.
Genevieve, that's a terrific background you got there. Wow, what an office.
Oh, mine?
Yeah.
It's not mine, but husbands. But we all use it.
Yeah, home offices have been become extremely important these last two years.
Yeah, didn't they say the entire remodeling industry has changed? Because from open concept that was being very popular, now people want to have walls and doors. So different people at home could somewhat to have their own space for school, for work.
I learned recently that Wayfair is actually selling a portable, quiet office unit that you can install into your home.
Really?
Yeah.
Like a cubicle?
You're right. Yes, yes, like an office that's somewhat soundproof.
Can I tell you, in my office, I turned my closet into an audio booth. I lined it and made out and have a microphone in there, so.
So Ken's back, sorry, Ken's back, but he's muted. Can you hear us, Ken?
I dialed in on the phone because for some reason my system's not working. So I'm, I'm video, but I'm on the phone.
All right, let's, let's go ahead and then begin, shall we? At, I've got, is it 8:05? Is that right? 8:05, let's call this meeting to order. And start with our pledge of allegiance. There's a flag over my shoulder here. Everyone can see it. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, liberty, justice, and for all. Thanks, everyone. Do you want to roll call? Oh, this is something that, is this something Kathy's doing or Kristen?
Oh, I, okay, so I'll do it. Okay. Chairperson Steve DoMeyer.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Liz Hollingsworth.
Here.
Trustee Linda Molno.
Here.
Trustee Lois Derry. Not here. Trustee Genevieve Chen.
Here.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you. The agenda was posted 72 hours beforehand at City Hall and at the Stoneman Building and also on our website. Did we receive any public comments?
We did not.
All right, let's move ahead then to our first agenda item, the approval of minutes. Do I have a recommendation to approve the minutes or any comments or discussion?
I move that we approve the minutes from October 25, 2021.
Second.
Of the second. Great. All in favor, say aye.
Now discussion.
Oh, no discussion, without discussion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, so is there, is there any discussion?
Now we vote.
Okay, now we vote. All in favor?
I need to do a roll call.
Okay.
Chairperson Steve DoMeyer.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee Molno.
Aye.
Trustee Derry's not here and trustee Chen.
Here.
All right.
Approved.
Then the motion is approved. Minutes are approved. Great. Let's move on to our reports. I'll start with the chairperson report. Since this is Thanksgiving week, I wanted to express my gratitude for the service all of you provide to our community. San Remo is greatly enriched by the work that all of you do and have done over the years to make our city better. And as a 25-year resident, I've reaped the benefits of those efforts and hope to continue to do so for many years to come. I especially want to thank Vice Chair Hollingsworth for her guidance, leadership, and years of service, both in the school district and as an involved active citizen. I appreciate her serving as vice chair and for her wisdom and friendship over these many years and for making sure that we had discussion before voting on the minutes. I appreciate the opportunity to lead the board for 2022. My overall goal is to ensure that all stakeholders work together so that the Crow Public Library continues to enrich the community through free, universal access to our robust collections, innovative programs, and our responsive services. You know, in preparation for this new position, I went back and reviewed the binder that I received when I became a member of the board, the Handbook for Commissions, Boards, and Committees that I got back in 2018. And in these times of what seems to be national incivility, harsh rhetoric and just plain bad manners, I found this passage to be most helpful. It says, "Each member should keep in mind these important points. Show respect for another's viewpoint. Allow others adequate time to fully present their views before making comments. Be open and honest. Strive to minimize political action among members." And I just saw this, one of my favorite authors, Adam Grant, says in times of Thanksgiving here especially, it's important to remember that politeness is not the same as kindness. Being polite is saying what makes people feel good today. Being kind is what makes people feel better tomorrow. In polite cultures, people bite their tongues on disagreement and criticism. In kind cultures, people speak their minds respectfully. And I hope we continue to speak our minds respectfully. From my part, I'm going to have to balance the need for allowing others adequate time to fully present their views with managing to keep this meeting conducted in a reasonable amount of time. I'm kind of anti-meeting and I like to keep things moving along. So that's going to be my challenge moving ahead. I want to respect everyone's time, especially staffs. They have a great burden and we don't need to have multiple hour meetings. In a meeting we had last Monday to plan today's agenda, Vice Chair Hollingsworth noted that this is a time of change. We have many people in new roles, including myself, and that there are opportunities as a result of these changes. Here's what I'd like to work towards in 2022. Better coordination with the board and the two library support groups, the Friends and the Foundation. Come to a consensus on this board's responsibilities. Clarify the library's strategic plan and work to ensure its implementation. Be a resource for the community services director as she staffs the librarian position. And to strengthen our board by adding two alternate members so that when we have our trustee terms expire, we are well-suited to continue our mission with experienced members. With that, that concludes my notes. Let's move on to our trustee reports. Let's start with Vice Chair Hollingsworth.
I'll wait until the budget and CIP liaison report.
Okay. Trustee Molno.
Just, just one point of agreement with, with your report, Steve. And then I'll do the Crane report when it comes up. I just wanted to second that request to get the alternates. And looking at the screen today and seeing that Lois is not here, we are very close to not having a quorum. And that is what, that is absolutely crucial for the trustees, because if we did not have a quorum, there would not be a meeting today. And given that some of us, Lois and I particularly, are of an age that there may be a day that we don't show up for whatever reason. Hopefully, it's not a terrible one, but I think we need to be cognizant of that. And for the, you know, for the safety, the ongoing operations of the library, we, I think that that is a responsibility that, that we need to take seriously. And I really hope that council will agree.
Thanks, Linda. Trustee Chen. Oh, are you muted?
Apologize. I really enjoy what you said at the beginning. And I certainly wish that our entire community, society would be run this way. And hopefully, that's not a wishful thinking.
Thank you. Did I skip anybody, anyone else that I can't see on the call? It's a trustee that I've forgotten. Okay.
I am, this is Lois that I'm in on the phone. For some reason, I casketed on my computer.
Oh.
But I'm here.
Lois, you're not, you're not alone with having technical issues today. Welcome. And do you have anything to report?
No, thank you.
All right, all right, let's move on to the Crane Art Gallery Liaison Report.
Thank you. Crane Art Gallery, we are moving forward. Sean Kirkpatrick, whose exhibit came down at the end of October, sold one painting for $200 and has given us a donation of $40. The donations from our exhibiting artists are voluntary. We suggest a 10% donation, which, if you are familiar with the artistic community, is an exceptional deal. Because most galleries will take upwards of 50% of the sale price of a, of a painting. And for, for the artists in our community, this is, this is really a wonderful opportunity for them. Marion Fortunati's works went up on the, on the, as soon as Sean's came down. And will be up through January 2nd. If you have not seen them yet, I suggest taking a look. She is a remarkable artist. I was very impressed with what I saw. I was also very happy to attend on Saturday, November the 20th, a reception, the first reception that the Crane Art Gallery has held in almost two years. And it was, it was very nicely attended. It was held out on the patio, which is not ideal, because the artwork is not right there. But people did go in and look. I'm not sure if, if any paintings were sold, but the receptions are where artists generally make the, the largest sales. I know there were quite a few people chatting with her and asking questions. So I think, and, you know, taking a look at, at those paintings, I would not be surprised to see a number of them go up for sale. As far as our calendar, I know at the last meeting, I was hoping that by now we would have a calendar set for 2022, but it is still a work in progress. And considering we're dealing with artists, that should not be a surprise. We have several of our virtual artist presenters that are interested in doing an in-person exhibit in 2022. It's just a matter of working out when they can, when they can present and how it fits into our calendar. There is, I, I'm kind of going out on a limb here. I think Marion Fortunati's work comes down on the 2nd of January. I think our next presenter is going to be Marie McDuffie, who some of you may know because she is in the community. I, it's not 100% certain, but it looks, it looks very promising. We, as I said, we're, we're working on getting the rest of the calendar put together. And hopefully, next meeting, I will have, I will have the complete lineup for you.
I have a question. Linda, are there any expenses or expenditures, like lighting, that the art gallery is coming up with?
Not coming up, although, given the fact that we haven't, I mean, we haven't been in person with, with the, with the art gallery exhibits these past two years. But the artwork has been up. And so Linda Lyons has been doing a good job of keeping everything working the way that it, it should be. And to my knowledge, she has not expressed to our committee any, any needs at this present time.
Any other questions, comments? Linda, thank you for that report. We'll move on to our number five, which is our marketing and publicity liaison report, which is me. And I'm going to suggest that we discontinue this report for the next year because we haven't had any meetings, number one. Second thing is, we're, we're in the process, the city is of hiring of marketing people. And I'll be interacting with them. And in this role as chair, I'm interacting with Kathy on a more ongoing basis as well. So I think that any information that I receive will be passed along in the chair report or most likely that it'll be redundant, because that's what Kathy's going to be presenting in her, her director's report. So I think we don't really have a need for this report for the next year or so. Should we move on to the budget and CIP liaison report? Liz? Genevieve, whoever's.
Do you want to talk about our meeting last week with Kristen? You're on mute.
Sure. We had a good, quick meeting with Kristen last week. And we basically talked about our unrestricted, our donation fund. We like to see the transactions. We want to know how the progress is going, whether we have received the funds and all that. So Kristen is still working on it. And we are looking forward to hear about it. And this is something that we do care about a lot. And because this is the contribution the community has given us. And we felt we need to be responsible to our donors. So this is a small portion that we're pretty interested in. Liz?
Steve, to your point of, you know, removing things that are redundant or not as necessary, like the marketing and publicity, I think the CIP part of our committee, we're not doing that because there are no CIP projects this current year. So that could be taken out. Kristen, I've got to hand it to you. I really appreciate that you met with Genevieve and with me last week. Kristen, you were able to answer almost all of our questions. And the ones that you weren't, I really appreciate that you've gone to do the research. And it looks like you have some things to tell us about that you, that weren't in the donations monitor that we looked at together last week. I know, Ken, you sent us an email. And Steve, when would you like to discuss that now or?
I think that would be a good time to do it. This would be a fine time to do it.
Okay, Ken, can you kind of explain what?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, a couple of things. I think one of them is to try to save staff time, because we're really understaffed in a lot of areas. And when I look at the financial side of the library, we, we have, fortunately, have an analyst, Kristen, who reports to the librarian, who reports to Kathy, who reports to the CFO. So, you know, we really have a lot of financial oversight on the city staff side of the budgets. So I think moving to a quarterly review and in a summary mode would be a healthy step towards, you know, increasing some efficiencies and saving. So, and moreover, when I look at the numbers on the library side, it's, you know, they don't vary very much. It's primarily staff, so the expenses don't go, go up and down a whole lot, nor do the, nor do the revenues. So I think from an oversight perspective, going to a quarterly review makes sense.
The budget format and reporting form that you're talking about is on page 16. And the budget monitor is on page 17 of today's packet. And then at our last meeting in October, Kathy shared a sample, I guess, of what would be the executive summary. And Kristen, could you screen share that?
Yes. Okay, do you see it?
Yes, can you go one more, one more? Okay, so we are looking at a 65-ish line of information that we've been receiving for several years. Two, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven lines of information in these executive summaries. And I think that's a very jarring kind of a change. But as I.
Well, you know, you normally.
As I look at some of it, though, I see your point. I don't think we need all of this detail. We don't need to know the postage. We don't need to know the standing orders or the mileage. And I see that there is room for making changes to this, the budget summary. But I don't think the executive summary quite does it. I think, you know, I recognize that our role is to advise the council. And I think with the quarterly executive fund summary, if it's as simplistic as the one we saw in October, I don't think I can, with good conscience, give you good advice. But I think there's room for improvement. And one thing that we might want to do is look at the city's budget book. And the library starts on page 155. And I agree with you, we don't have to see the personnel. Those are the largest expenditures. And I don't know that anybody can do much about them because it changes with the hiring and with the revolving door that we've been having. But I think that there's something in the middle of between this executive summary being almost no information and the budget document that we've always been getting. I think that we have to remember that since 2018, Ken, I think you're talking about trust in the personnel, the people, and the five people or six positions you mentioned that look at this budget before it gets to us. And, and I, I trust them. But we've had so many of them in the past three years. Five different community services directors, three different management analysts. And they don't train each other because the, the old one is gone before the new one is hired. And I think that the problems that I've seen are more a function of these transitions between staff than any problems or mishandling. Just last week, Genevieve and I had questions. And there's a specific question about a second donation the Chinese club made. And we couldn't track it. It wasn't spent last year for very good reasons. Jenny could not go to Taiwan and pack her suitcase and buy the new books during the pandemic. But we can't find where that money is and we can't find where, and I have faith that Kristen is finding it. But it's not shown. And those are the things that, until we have some consistency in staff staying, I think we need to really be monitoring during these transitions. I think we should be and look at pairing down this budget monitor and content, perhaps in frequency. But most important, I think we really need to look at how we track donations and see if this donations monitor is the best tool. Or if it can be modified somehow.
Well, then, if, if, what I'm hearing is concerned about tracking donations and maybe there is a donation tracker. But I'm kind of thinking about the overall financial monitoring. And even if you would look at, you know, how the, the city reports, yes, when we budget, we, we budget in detail. But when we, we, we report, we report in summary. And you look for the variances. And even here, you see the, the notes. So when there's a variance, there's normally a footnote that explains what, what's going on. So that the, you know, from the city council's perspective of the overall budget, we are, we, we stay up a few thousand feet and only drill down when the variance is.
And can you scroll up a little?
So how would this, this doesn't even have donations on this library division quarterly financial report? We would not only.
Again, so if donations are, if donations are of interest, then Kristen can create a schedule of donations. And you can review the schedule of donations. But, you know, in terms of the overall, you know, line item by line item budget monitoring, you probably don't need to go into the monthly details. You can stay up a little bit.
Well, except for, if we look at that budget monitor on page 16. And so many of the expenditures from lines 55 to 64 are built in as donations. So it's both in the current budget monitor that we've been seeing month to month. And it's separate in the donations monitor. So I'd like to see some way that that can still be looked at. The other thing, Ken, is that about a year ago, we started talking about looking at changing our approach to donations in the budgeting process. And Robert left, so it never got done. And Paul was understaffed and the budget just sort of rolled from one year to the next as a copy paste. What I'm suggesting is that we get so much money from the friends. Why are they paying for other contract services? Why are they paying for materials and supplies unless it's related to a program like a make and take? And we talked a year ago about our reliance on donations and that it really caught up to us during the pandemic when the friends, you know, understandably couldn't raise money. I think we need to look at a different way of approaching it. Maybe building the base, the budget without any donations in it. Seeing where we're at and then asking our different groups to give their donations for specific things like books specifically or programs specifically. But these donations are so embedded throughout the whole budget.
I'm trying to see, what is the annual donations budget? Is that the? I'm trying to see, what is the annual donations budget? Is that the sixteen thousand, six seventy-five?
We budgeted twenty-one thousand in donations for this fiscal year.
From?
For the year twenty, twenty-one thousand for the year on a budget of what, a million five? Or something?
From who, Kristen?
They're just in the various revenue line items. If you're looking on the budget monitor, their line items fourteen through twenty-one.
Can I, I reckon, I hear what you're saying about the the difference based on the budget number versus the donations. But then why are the the donations used for such basic kinds of expenditures? Like other contract services? And is that the, you know, right thing to ask them to do? I think also, you know, you've done the schools foundation thing, a lot of us have, and we have a responsibility to the donors. I think we have a responsibility to spend out our restrictive donation reserve fund of sixty-two thousand dollars before we go asking the library foundation for more money or so forth. But that's a different discussion. But these donations are so embedded in the expenditures. And I have also, you know, we were at the Chinese club gala a week ago. I thanked them for their donation. I want to know if we've spent everything that they gave us and if they, we've spent, we haven't, we have a plan to spend it in the way that they donated it. And what were the questions Genevieve and I had a week ago was that appeared that from one year to the next, if the donations weren't used, they were sucked up. And that shouldn't be it either. If we didn't buy the Chinese language books one year for good reason, we should have a plan to carry that over for the same purpose for the next year.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is, and I'm compartmentalized, I'm hearing two different things here. One is, you know, my, my suggestion is on the overall budget, go to a quarterly higher level review. But what I'm hearing you say, Liz, is concern about the twenty-one thousand dollars worth of donations and how that money is spent. So I could see Kristen and Kathy working together to come up with a schedule of what, what donations come in and specifically where those funds get extended, you know, and treat that as a schedule of, you know, donation money and and where it gets, where it's getting spent is kind of a additional information. I think you could still do that on a, on a quarterly basis.
Ken, what's your opinion about looking at a new fiscal year budget that is built not relying on any donations?
I'm indifferent, totally indifferent. Because they did the donations is twenty-one thousand dollars and the total budget is a million seven. So, you know, the twenty-one is not a big, is not a big number.
Agree. So can somebody else kind of say what their summary is? Because I've done a lot of talking.
I, this is Linda. I would, I would just say that I agree wholeheartedly with everything that Liz said. I think that there are definitely items or sections of the budget monitor that we're receiving that we don't necessarily need. I also have faith and trust in the the staff in putting all of this together. But what the bottom line is that it's the trustees that are only interested or primarily interested, I shouldn't say only, primarily interested in the library. This is what we're here for. All of the other people that that are receiving this information first have so many other responsibilities. And I'm not saying that they don't care about the library. But when you have multiple responsibilities, it's, you don't have the kind of focus on it that the trustees are going to have. I have no problem with maybe cutting down, maybe working with Kristen on, you know, making the budget monitor a little bit shorter. Where we don't need all the information, for example, on personnel, but as Liz said, so much of this budget monitor is directed towards donations. And I really take offense at saying that the twenty-one thousand dollars in donations doesn't matter.
I don't think that's we were saying.
I didn't say, I didn't say it doesn't matter. What I said is in, or what I meant to say is in the scheme of a budget of a million seven, you know, twenty thousand dollars is not as big of a, is not as big of a number. It matters. What I think, what I think I'd, I'd like to suggest is, and it's a little bit of a trust. Why don't you let Kristen and Kathy come back with what a good view of donations and expenditures related to the funds coming in, what that might look like. And and then also even with these summary things, what what you normally look at is you look where the, where their variances. Either dollar swing or percent swing versus prior year and versus budget. And if those, if those tick out, then that's, that's where the eyeballs normally go. And that's how we are, you know, effectively, you know, managing the the financial aspects of the city.
I like your idea of asking Kathy and Kristen to come back with something for further discussion in January. Maybe make this its own agenda item because we can't take action today. It's not an agenda item. But also on the quarterly report, I'd like to suggest that all the trustees look at if, you know, pretty much Ken, as mayor for a little while more, is telling us what the council needs for us to do to give them the advice. That's what he's looking at our role as. In under the expenses on this very simplistic report, one of the things that I'd like to see are in adult and children's services, the difference between our programs and book purchases. So I'd like that added. And I'd like for the other trustees to kind of go between the budget monitor that we know and love. And then this quarterly report to see what are the other things that you might track that we would like the information about. I I think we all can leave out postage and gas and water and the electric bill. But there might be things that are your particular area of looking at, like Lois and I like to look at how much have you spent on children's books? And how much has been budgeted and spent on programs?
Yeah, I would think those things would be a very healthy addition to this, to the schedules that Kristen and Kathy then would 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 roll up so we can focus on what's truly important and helps move, move the needle forward.
I, yeah, my only comment would be that the current budget monitor is so detailed and so extensive, it just becomes noise. And it's difficult to wade through to see what is important. So I think a reworking of it to simplify it and focus on the things that Liz is saying that 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 we care about and our donation would would be of great value to us. And I also think, I want to reiterate my strong feeling that as a former member of the foundation, when we go out and ask the community for money for a specific thing and it doesn't get spent on that, that makes us look very bad as people asking for money. So if the the role of the board to make sure that monies are spent on the things they are is incredibly crucial. So I I think that's, we don't want to, we don't want to poison the well of donations by telling people that, you know, you donated for this but didn't get spent on that.
Yeah, I agree. And what I think we, what we might be walking towards is a very healthy operating dashboard. You know, what are the key metrics that really move the library forward? And let's measure those and track those. Because if you look at the, like in the city council agendas, the first ten pages are operating metrics of a, you know, fire response time, police act, all, all that stuff. So if we can get ourselves to focus not on the minute numbers here, but what actually moves the needle, you know? Yeah, well, what's important to the moving the library forward?
Someone else is trying to talk. Go ahead.
No, I just agree with you is what happens to the library specifically is what we're here for.
Right.
Hey, this Kathy, I have my hand up. Maybe you can't see me on your, on your phone with your, with your window view.
You're very tiny.
Okay. Yeah. So good, good morning, everybody. I really greatly appreciate this conversation. And Ken, thank you so much for being here and facilitating the discussion. Some of the takeaways just recently from everybody's comments lead me to ask some some, some questions as well as a suggestion. First off, I greatly appreciate the background on the challenges around the tracking of donations year over year. And then, and ensuring that the funds are spent in a timely manner for the, for their intended use. And I do believe it is our obligation to, to report on that. I don't know that this is the right tool that helps us do that. I think we've all agreed that or a few of us have agreed that maybe there's a an improved tool. I am, because I I haven't had a conversation with Paul, yet the finance director in detail to help me understand how and why this restricted donation reserve fund, how it's used. Why it does have a balance of sixty-two thousand dollars in it? By policy, is there a threshold that we have to maintain? I don't know. So that's a learning and a knowledge transfer that I need to seek out with Paul along with Kristen. But then lastly, I wanted to mention that Steve, would you be open to and possibly with Liz, another working meeting with Kristen and I and Steve and Liz to, to, to give us that historic perspective? Talk about all the clarifying questions, because as you mentioned, there, there is not a lot of folks left here to be able to explain to us that how and the why we got here with some of these funds, what worked, what didn't work. And then kind of improve the tools going forward, along with really educating Kristen and I.
Yeah, I'd be open to that. Kristen, could you do me a favor and stop sharing the screen, please? So I can, I can see someone other than Kathy as a postage stamp on my tiny, tiny little iPhone.
I'm having Zoom technical difficulties. It's not letting me unshare my screen. I've been trying to unshare for the last fifteen minutes.
Can you want to transfer hosting over to me and we'll see if I
I can't even see like my Zoom tab. It won't even let me mute myself, turn off my camera, do anything. I can't even end the call when I need to. It's not working at all.
So and you can't transfer, you can't even
No, I don't even see.
Do we all need, well, let's see, since you're the meeting host, can you log off and jump back on and the meeting still stay live?
I don't know. I want to say no.
Probably not.
This is, I, I, I'm a little shy for you. I'm enjoying the fact that everyone else is having the same technical problems I've had for the last couple of days.
Well, I don't know if everybody else got this email last night from Spectrum saying that with the high winds and potential fire danger, we might have internet problems and cable problems today. So
Right.
They, I think they were, they were jumping ahead, trying to forestall some, some phone calls. But if, while, while we're trying to work this out, Kathy, I can give you some background on that restricted donations reserve fund balance. When it comes to the Crane Art Gallery, that money is money that over many years we have, we have taken in in donations. And I know Liz Hollingsworth, myself, Mary Sue, who was the, on the committee at in previous years, worked very hard to find this money because it had, it was still somewhere in, in space. It could not be located. It's similar to what Liz is just saying about the Chinese club donation. It could, these don't, these monies could not be found. And we worked with, we worked with city staff to make sure that donations did not, at the end of the year, just get absorbed into the general fund. And so that they would be used for a purpose. And so that amount that you see on there, the twelve thousand plus for the Crane Art Gallery, that is money that we have received in donations from artists over a number of years. And if they're sitting in reserve, should we need to spend money on lights or something else for the, the art gallery? And I, it is my assumption that each of the other categories is really the same thing.
So back in twenty eighteen, what Linda was talking about, Kathy, is that the librarian came and said, we have fifty thousand dollars we're going to lose because the city's finance policy at the time in twenty eighteen was use it or lose it. And as you can understand, that the donations were given for the library and for purposes, maybe books or whatever. But it wasn't to go into the general fund. And because the library is the department within the city that gets the most donations, has the most donations fund. We had to work with the city finance director, which was one or two guys before Paul. And we developed with the city, the city's policy for donations. And the city council adopted it September eighteenth of twenty eighteen. And you, so you'll find the city's donation policy. Then the library developed our policy for what do we do after we get donations? And that should be on our website. And but Mark Ziegfred, who is still with us, did a lot of the forensic accounting work to find, as Linda was saying, this money that should have been accrued over years. And that's with this little box on the donations monitor, page seventeen. In the little corner is what are the donations that have accrued across time? I know it's very unusual for a city or a city entity to be dealing with donations. And and Ken, this is where we get a lot of donations in the scope of things compared to other libraries. And I'd like to see at some point that sixty-two thousand, two hundred and sixteen dollars spent out. I, I think it's disingenuous to ask the foundation to give twenty-five thousand dollars for this or that when we can spend this out. So, but that's another.
I mean, clearly, clearly, in my mind, if there should be a separate bank account for donations and it goes into that bank account and that's reserved solely for the, for the library. I mean, that's
It, it, but in twenty eighteen, that wasn't the policy. So, but now it is. And I don't know what bank it is in, Ken. I'll leave that to you and Annie.
Well, I will, if I could just kind of pull this together here, I will definitely, Liz, thank you so much for the background. I will definitely go and read as well as Kristen. We'll look at that city donation policy. I, I agree. It, it seems a little like, like we've received a donation, but we're not really using it. We're clearly not using it in a timely manner. And now we're building this big reserve that is like a, a safety net or something. Is and and but is by policy, do we have to maintain a threshold? And if we don't, then yes, we absolutely need to put, is we could use, but Linda or Liz, no Linda, excuse me, brought up the twelve thousand on the crane, which, which might be for, you know, maintenance and, and a, a improvements to the physical gallery area. So we may want
Exactly.
We may need to keep that, do a set aside for that. But the other stuff is materials, it looks like. Which should be, but I'm not really sure what is the definition of that admin line. Anyway, so lots of research and coming up to speed for myself as well as Kristen. And I think a good hard work, working meeting would be appreciated.
And I think what this, these past few minutes have shown us is the fact that there is a lot of experience in this group. History, good, long memories that are able to be applied to the situation and inform the new staff, people, what's going on. And also the fact that Kathy, you're open to having the, this meeting and inviting us to share the expertise and, and things to make things move forward in a fashion. Because I believe that our current mayor ran on a, on a platform of transparency. So the better we can get about reporting our numbers accurately will, will be in good shape there.
Yeah, what I'm hearing here is, is that the real need, Kathy and Kristen, for, you know, this schedule of donations, you know? What, what is it? Where is it coming from? What is the purpose of the donation? And then ultimately, what is it being spent on? And to make sure that donations coming in, what, that there's no fiscal year. what, that there's no fiscal year line that it has to be spent by. It's, you know, it, it goes into a separate, you know, bank account so that it can be used at, uh, at the board's, uh, discretion. Whenever it's appropriate.
Can this money from the city be given to the foundation for their endowment fund?
Probably not.
I asked that again.
So on this page, whatever 16, there's a $62,000 restricted donations fund balance. Can the city give that to the foundation for the foundation to put into their endowment?
I do not know.
Liz, that's not all foundation money. That, the Crane Art Gallery is part of that.
Okay. So let's say 50,000.
I, I do not know. I would, I would ask Kathy to talk to Paul to figure out, you know, what that, what that is and what restrictions there might be.
I'm just curious. That is not the most important thing you're working on. I also think Mark in the finance department can be of great assistance to you because he really went and looked at the state and the, the finance department sort of rules about the donations to guide us to the point.
Well, that's very, that's really helpful. And, um, we have developed a good working relationship with Mark. He's helping us with some other operational, um, fiscal controls that, um, I thought were important operationally, which is a priority, but I will definitely add this to our list. Um, we're going to be kicking off budget for the entire city here in just a month or two. Kristen and I'll be doing a big learning curve. This is a great opportunity for, um, us to add this to our list of things that we really need to get a strong firm handle on, as well as we work towards a, um, third quarter report for the board coming up. We're mid-year right now, uh, coming up on mid-year. So, um, this is all good insight. And now we understand kind of, I'm, I, I really am hearing all the priorities and I, I appreciate the opportunity to, to take our time this morning to, to learn and to kind of really hone in on what those, those key priorities should be.
Kathy, could I, could I just make one point in, in looking at, uh, the budgeting for next year? Keep in mind that some of these numbers, uh, and in particular, I'm thinking of that 21,000, uh, donation, that's an anomaly because of COVID. In, in, uh, years prior to COVID, it was three, four, sometimes five times that amount. So, yeah, I mean, everything slowed down.
Look at the historic, maybe the last.
Yeah, look at it historically rather than, yeah, rather than last year.
17, 18, 19 versus 20.
Exactly.
I understand.
And, and I think the other point that Liz made a, a few minutes ago, that I think we should consider it in terms of, of moving forward, the, the notion that, uh, the budgeting for the library, we shouldn't really think about donations as being used for every, every ongoing maintenance, like the painting of the interior library, like that, those, those things should be for extra things. It's the city's responsibility to, to pay for and maintain the library. I think, uh, I've seen the mayor nodding, so he agrees with that. And it just, so this should be extra things. Then again, as a marketing person, we can go out and say, your donations brought us this technology or this improvement to whatever.
Yeah, donations support day-to-day operational needs of the building and the, and the library operations. I understand. Okay.
Okay. Well, that was a very fruitful discussion. Um, and let's move on to, uh, item number seven, the San Marino Center renovation update report, uh, which is me, and we have had no meetings. So unless the mayor has something he wants to add on, uh, the meeting once again got canceled this week. So.
Uh, I, I think it's very, very close to being able to go out for a bit. I know that, um, Director Throne has pre-screened, I believe, three contractors that are qualified to do the work. And that the drawings have gone through plan check and are getting pretty close to, uh, going out for a bit.
Exciting times, that's for sure.
One comment?
Yes.
I'm sorry, just to dovetail on this. So, um, uh, last meeting, uh, Linda brought up that there was some misconceptions about the, um, the scope and use and the plans for the facility. Once it is renovated, I, uh, reached out to Michael Throne and I asked him to please write an article that will be appearing in our new, uh, winter guide. Uh, and so, uh, that will be, that is our quarterly publication out of community service department. So I've asked him to include renderings, the most recent renderings of the building and then explain um, an update to the community. So, um, thank you for that, that, um, that nudge there, Linda, and that idea. I thought, you know what? Let's get ahead of this. So the guide will be coming out mid-December and so he will be, uh, explaining to the community through his great writing skills. I've seen the article. It's very informative. And then we included, um, a couple of the renderings with captions. So, um, hopefully that will give the community a, a real up-to-date, uh, understanding of where the project sits.
Terrific. All right. Let's move on to, uh, number eight, our director and city librarian report, please.
Uh, well, thank you. It's taken, uh, you have, um, our collective report. Jeff is with me on the call here, with us on the call here. Um, I will not go through this verbatim, but, uh, and hopefully you've all had a chance to read through it. The personnel updates, um, clearly we, we, um, need critical, uh, positions filled. We need all positions filled to be able to run a high, a highly responsive library operations. But, uh, we do have two full-time positions that we're bringing, that we're recruiting for. Number one, the librarian, city librarian position. The, uh, recruitment closed last Monday. Um, we did receive 63 applications. I am working with, uh, the HR folks over at City Hall. We are planning for our first round, uh, calling it a technical panel. For Monday, the 29th candidates are being, uh, informed today and invited in for those, uh, interviews on Monday. And then throughout the first and second week of December, myself and city manager, um, Marcella, we will be moving through the second and third rounds. Uh, so that will be in December. And then our librarian two position recruitment, um, is being finalized and that's going to be posted today as well. Um, then doesn't, is there any questions about? Go ahead, Liz.
Kathy, once you've filled these two positions, are you back to being staffed to before COVID levels? I mean, are all the part-time staff and so forth?
Um, well, um, the, these are, we have four full-time librarians. So I can speak to the library team, uh, the full, the full-time folks. So we're down 50% as of last Thursday was Rebecca's last day. Uh, once we get those two positions filled, which I don't really see those positions actually having people in place, beginning their orientation and training, probably until, um, just to put a timeline to this, and I'll, and I'll answer your question. I may have to defer to Jeff on the part-time side. I know, um, but fingers crossed, you know, we have, um, by, I would say end of February possibly, but we are also looking at a, um, a maternity leave for one of our other librarians. So while we'll have full, for full-time positions filled, we will be covering a maternity leave for, um, February, March, April and May at that, that timeframe. So we're going to always kind of, this year be, you know, uh, having, uh, continue to have some capacity issues. Because those full-time positions, um, are really what help move, you know, operations forward. And we have, uh, we will have a very large learning curve and time period of orientation and training for the rest, throughout the rest of the year, probably, uh, with, um, in regards to part-time, Jeff, can you speak to that? I, I'm, I, I think I know the answer, but I'm going to let you speak more specifically.
Yeah, we, um, did some hiring, um, around the time that we opened. And, um, we're back up to where we were. I'm happy to say.
Thank you.
We are a hundred percent staff Jeff in all part-time vacancies. Except we are losing, we are losing a, a key part-timer librarian, part-time librarian.
Yeah, it's, um, it's kind of a moving target.
Sure.
Unfortunately, um, uh, on December the 14th, we will be losing one of our part-time people. But for the moment, we're, where we should be.
Recruiting though, right? We will need to recruit for that position. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Thank you both for the information.
Okay. So moving on, um, I, uh, I don't know if anybody has any questions regarding the San Marino Unified School District for Post Agreement? Any questions about that? It's a very simple agreement. Um, I, my, again, my report is, uh, it's fairly self-explanatory. They no longer at the unified level provide, uh, that stock position. They're looking for the, for the, the city to, partner as sort of a third-party provider and, uh, fill that role on behalf of the unified, um, obligation as a, an accredited, education system. They have to have somebody with certified librarians so that they're reaching to the city for, for that agreement. And it's currently with the city attorney as well as city manager's office. So, uh, and then I know, um, uh, city manager Marlo is, uh, also meeting with, um, Dr. Delatorre to finalize any of those, uh, questions. The vaccination policy update, again, um, all city staff within CSD are vaccinated, had the, um, the, uh, verbal rollout of the requirement for volunteers. Anybody have any questions in relation to that?
Good job, Kathy. Good job.
Yeah, we are working with our, um, partners, the friends of the library to verify if anybody is on site that we have, uh, full vaccination before sort of being on property. Then, and then, uh, making sure then any of the volunteers that work at the bookshop also have been fully vaccinated. We have their request moving on to page.
And that we have to be fully vaccinated before we resume in-person meetings, Kathy?
Right, right. Sorry. Yes. Which, um, not sure when that'll be. The city hall and the, um, council will let us know when we're approved to bring all of our volunteer boards and commissions back in person.
Louis, how do you feel about that?
I would love to see in-person meetings again, and I can't imagine any of the trustees not being fully vaccinated or the city employees. So that's where I feel.
Okay, Louis has spoken. That's where we are at.
Um, moving on to the Brown Act training, uh, city clerk, Baker will be, um, providing a sort of a cheat sheet flyer summary that will forward to, to all of you. Steve and Liz, do you think that will suffice? Or do you still want us to maybe have a, either a virtual training? Q and A with the clerk? Or do you want to take a look at that document first?
Let's see what she gives us and then we can respond to the questions. I think for our purposes as trustees, the clarification and the kind of training reminder is serial communications and electronic communications. And if we understand that, then I think we're good.
Okay.
Liz has got the background in all the Brown Act trainings.
And I could probably do the training, but, um, we won't.
Can I just interject some institutional memory? When I first came on the board, uh, the city attorney, who at the time was Steve Dorsey, came to our board meeting and gave us a, a very succinct, um, uh, little, uh, lecture, so to speak, on the Brown Act. And I think it's something that's ongoing and we don't want to forget. And accidentally make a mistake. And so, you know, however it's done, just so it's done efficiently. But just, uh, that's how it was, how it had been done in the past.
Okay.
Well, and since this board is going to be, uh, losing two trustees come June, I think it might be a wise idea to schedule something for the new people coming on board to be brought up to speed.
It would be really nice to have two alternates there so that they could, um, learn this, um, without having to be told second, third, fourth hand later on.
Correct.
I, I think a flyer would be great, Kathy, with the information. We are, you know, we're the library board, like we can read. So we'll read it.
That was exactly my point. I mean, I can forward that, but then if you guys would like to just all understand and, and read and, and, uh, and take it all to heart, or do we need a facilitated training? So I'll just defer to Steve. I'll defer to Steve once we get the stuff from Christina.
Liz, we'll have you come back later in the year to conduct the meeting for the training for us.
Uh, the next section of this report, of the director's report, um, the, the management analyst report going forward will come through the director's report. And so as we move to, um, streamline and, uh, ensure that the level of reporting that we do do meets the, the needs and the expectations of the board. It will be, it will be, uh, right here in this section, uh, being able to allow you, uh, the trustees to ask ample questions. Uh, we will however, provide you with, um, any of the highlights and, um, budget notes to date. So in this report, uh, thank you, Kristen, for including those. So we have them here. So, uh, if you have any questions about, um, any of the variances, we are here to, to answer those for both the, um, operating budget as well as the donation on which we hadn't received any. However, Linda mentioned the $40 donation. So I have a question from the artist. So.
I don't know. I, I'm not sure if Linda Lyons has, um, has received it yet and processed it. I would, I just learned of that, um, recently.
Got it. Okay. So that may show up.
It could be in the works.
In the works and, okay, sounds good. But are there any questions about the, the financial reports that we did provide you this month?
Um, Kristen, can you walk us through on the budget monitor, how you got another like $10,000 in just a few days since we met?
Are you talking about?
Monitor, um, which I believe is page 17 of 27. The box on the bottom far left corner, the restricted donations reserve fund balance, the one we accrue from year to year on the last month and what we talked about last week. And it's increased. Kristen, can you talk about and tell me about that?
Yeah. So after our meeting last week, I reached out to Mark and asked him how I can get those updated numbers because like you mentioned during our meeting, it had not changed since the prior fiscal year. And he was able to provide me with these updated numbers. So that is the new updated reserve fund bound as of the end of last fiscal year.
So how much did you add?
Um, I, I would have to see what I reported last month. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Kristen, maybe you and I could talk about that at a separate time.
Yeah, sure.
If that's okay with everybody, but you're, Kristen, you're tracking down that money and I appreciate it.
Yes, the numbers that I shared in that new table that I got presented to council, I believe in November, or was it early November or October? One of the two.
Okay. And then they, can you speak about the Chinese club and their second donation from last year?
No, I have not had the chance to look at that one yet.
Thank you. We'll talk about that soon.
Okay.
And I just want to give a, a, just a, uh, accolades and the utmost of, of compliments to Kristen, who, um, as you know, she's only been here four months and is an amazing researcher. She, um, she is just dogged, uh, to, to make sure that we get, um, our arms around all of the financials. Things are there, the systems, the internal systems and processes are, are not really, um, easy to navigate around. Uh, we will work, continue to work internally with, with Paul and his team to make sure that we know how to do things, uh, because again, to make sure that we know how to do things. Uh, because again, we are, we're, we're learning as we go and we just don't have a lot of, of training. When Mark and Paul are available, we're, we're, she's gobbling up all the information she can and, and learning as quickly as we can. So, so Kristin, thank you so much.
I second your commendations for Kristin. Thank you.
Phenomenal job. Yep. Uh, and then moving on, I did reach out to Cindy. Uh, the foundation update is, um, also listed. Uh, and then we reached out to the friends of the library. They gave us a very brief update. I know you all can read, so I don't want to, again, go verbatim. Um, we also included the calendar events coming up. We hope that you can mark your calendars for any of the programming that you might be interested in stopping in and, and participating in, or sharing with family and friends, or speaking intelligently about community services department as a whole and what we have planning coming up for the next ninety days. We do have the asterisks there which connotate if it's a recreation division-led, uh, event, and if it is not, it, then you can safely assume that it is being led by library staff. Um, and then we get to after the, um, updating upcoming events, excuse me, our operational events. Uh, these are things that come from, uh, the rest of the library staff, whether it be, um, operational updates, uh, the bathroom, the, the door counter and update on that passport, and then the programming. Do we have any questions or any need to clarify anything? Go ahead, Liz.
So on the bathroom AV project, some of that was also, um, in preparation for perhaps the city council holding all of their meetings there when the San Marino Center was under renovation. Did they add another monitor? That was one of the things because the, um, the overhead projector displays behind where the council sits and they can't see it. So another, um, screen or television was going to be placed on, I guess it's the north wall, I'm not positive. So were those, I guess, this is problems. We were talking about upgrades. Part of those upgrades also been done? Is that TV installed?
Well, I'm gonna, I, Jeff, do you know was, because I wasn't here. Jeff, do you know where any of those upgrades discussed as part of the forecasting for when the renovation begins? Or it was, do you know, do you know what those, have, have we met with, with Michael? Jeff?
Yeah. The, what we've done recently are repair work only. They're not upgrades. And I don't know, what the status on these screens monitors that you, that you see.
I am willing to go back through some of my notes. And if I can come up with, um, some of the proposal that the staff gave us about what need their proposed upgrades, I'll share that with you. Thank you very much for the information.
Um, yeah, Ken, um, I'm going to be jumping on that, um, from, I haven't had a, a meeting yet with the San Marino renovation task force, but I will add that to my list of questions about what that expectation is going to be. I think I'll know timing, but, um, I'll take the lead on that to, to really try to understand how we can get ahead of that and be prepared for those meetings. But thank you, Liz, for that information.
Well, and, and I'll try to get the history and the proposal may not be, um, well, I mean, there may be new technologies that are bigger and better, that will better solve our problems at this point because it's been a project that's been put off for a couple of years, understandably. And can I just comment about the maintenance facilities request? You have a long list. And again, in the interest of saving staff some time, I'm just interested in those pending bigger projects. Thank you for letting us know, but we don't have to know the outdoor book drop got fixed.
Okay, that sounds good.
I don't know how others feel. You're, you're giving us a lot of detail and I appreciate it, but we're still, so we're just giving you feedback on what you don't need to worry about.
Thank you. So I think you're speaking to the public works project support and facility maintenance updates.
Yes, pending projects that are the big ones that we've been tracking, which are the interior painting and the story walk.
But the work order stuff, you know, you'll trust that, that we will, that we will, um, you know, continue to work internally to, to get some of those, kind of, but they, they do affect customer service and programming. So if I feel like I, you know, it, it should, it's kind of a glaring, you know.
Kathy, my, my, Kathy, my coaching would be, you know, keep, keep the discussion at, at a strategic level, where you really, you know, get, get in the advice from, from this group and don't worry about the in-the-weeds operational stuff.
Well, we know that some of the.
And Steve, uh, you know, some, something has come to come to mind, you know, hearing this discussion today because with this, um, reserve balance, we got sixty-two thousand dollars in the reserve balance today. And the budget is to add twenty-one thousand dollars to that. So we're getting like eighty-three thousand dollars. So I would think that this group really should have a wish list of, you know, what projects do you think would really move the needle in terms of, you know, the performance of, of the library, whether it's programmatic or whether it's capital improvement. And then work with Kathy and staff on some of the capital things, you know, the city should be budgeting to support that so that those donations really get to be a very vibrant source of energy for the, for the, for the library.
I can.
And tangibly.
Agree with you.
Yeah, tangible results in the community too. We can communicate that.
I think too, even now, the friends usually give fifty to sixty thousand dollars in pre-COVID time. That sixty-two thousand dollar fund balance is what's been accrued. The twenty thousand dollars additional that you're talking about is all in the two eighty-one, uh, restricted expenditures and budgeted to be spent. So it won't go in that sixty-two thousand dollar pot of money, should it be spent. And what my point was earlier was, why is that being spent on materials and supplies and tape? So I think you're. To your idea of it being, um, specific project oriented, I, I love it.
Yeah, no, donation should not be spent for postage and tape.
I agree, I agree.
Okay, um.
Unless they're specifically donated for that purpose.
For, for two-sided.
I mean, there are people who do like to donate to the general fund.
Anyway.
Go ahead, David.
To wrap up, yeah, to wrap up, if anybody has any other questions about, uh, the, the, the other items in my report, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions at this point, and Jeff is available as well.
Thank you. Do, do we, uh, do we need a motion to accept the report or we just accept the report?
We just have to accept the report.
All right. Terrific. Let's move on then to, uh, new business, item number nine, Board of Trustees Meeting Schedule for twenty-twenty-two. And that is our packet there. The dates, see page twenty-seven to twenty-seven. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to look at that. We had, uh, in, in the planning meeting, uh, for the, the agenda for this meeting, we discussed whether or not to keep the Wednesday, March ninth, when we figured we'd keep it as a placeholder for now in case we do have the joint meeting with the city council. Is there any discussion on this, uh, schedule?
Uh, no, I think keeping that joint meeting in, in there is a definitely a good idea. I would just like to express my, uh, displeasure with the meeting in July and closing in August. And I know this was dictated by council, um, against our wishes, uh, last year. But it, to me, it makes no sense if we're looking at a, a facility that is working especially with children and, and, uh, parents of school-aged children that are all gone in July, that's the month that we should be dark. We should be open in August with our meeting when the schools are open again. This, I mean, this is a relatively new, I mean, for those of us whose children never went back to school until September. This is a whole new ballgame, but, um, uh, realistically, uh, the library needs to be up and running in August. And if the library is up and running, the trustees should be there to, uh, do our part. So that, that's just my, my personal opinion. I, I understand why the city wants, wanted everything, everybody meeting on this, on the same schedule. But when it doesn't make sense, it doesn't make sense.
You know, I, we brought this up, Linda, and, um, I remembered this part of our discussion. And I think I would agree with you, and especially when the library and the school district are having some sort of a, I don't know, memorandum of understanding about library services, if we're offering more in a formal way. However, school started this year on August eleventh. Who would have thought? And so by meeting at the end of July, we heard about what they had planned for the opening of school, the get-your-library card, um, publicity and so forth. And, um, I, I think if, I, I believe school will be open. Um, I would also like though for us to be open to adding an August meeting, should that be necessary as we move forward into some agreement with the school district.
I, I think opening the possibility of, of an August meeting is, is a good idea. I think what my concern specifically with July is, uh, oh, uh, we have, uh, at least the, for the time that I've been on the board, we've really expressed a desire to try and attract, um, new trustees who have, who actively have children in the school that are younger than some of us. And in order to do that, you know, that would be kind of the end of their vacation time and, um, you know, potentially cause a, a meeting without a quorum if we had, uh, if we, at, at the, at the point, point where we have younger, uh, trustees involved.
Yeah, I, I advocate, uh, moving school till after September as well. Oh, that was the point brought up, but I, I think, as we said, it's a time of change and it's, it's difficult for a lot of us who, who think that, uh, going to school before Labor Day is kind of an anathema. But I, I think this, uh, this layout of having the meeting in July and not in August is, makes more sense given the fact as Liz says that the school district is moving up earlier and earlier in, uh, starting in August. And, and we do have the option to add an extra meeting in August if we need to. Any other, any other comments? All right.
Are, are we at, um, old business or other business? Have we, do we?
We are.
Do we need to accept, um, or vote on the meeting schedule?
That's a good question.
I don't think it's, Kristin, I don't, what do you think? I don't think it's an action item.
Is it an action item? I couldn't quite tell from what was.
We review and finalize the schedule.
Yeah. I, we.
It can be.
Well, it says, once it's finalized by the trustees, it will be, uh, subject to the city manager's approval. So we probably should at least say that we're.
I move that we, um, submit this as written, um, for our calendar for twenty-twenty-two to the city manager.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All right, then let's vote. Go, Kristin.
Uh, Chairperson Domare.
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Hollingsworth.
Aye.
Trustee Mono.
Aye.
Trustee Derry.
Aye.
Uh, trustee Chan. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, aye.
Perfect.
Great. All right. And that's accepted. All right. Was there another, uh, any other new business you wanted to mention? Linda, was that your voice I heard?
Um, I just, I have an old business item that I would, uh, like to see put on the agenda in the next month or so, or two or three. Certainly, uh, I'd like to see it before I leave. And it has to, it, it has to do with the mission statement which we tabled at our last meeting. And, um, what I wanted to point out is that historically, the, uh, Board of Trustees has, has drafted a strategic plan, a five-year plan. Uh, it is due, overdue to be renewed. Uh, we've done this in the past with the help of, of city manager. Once it was crafted to the liking of the city manager and the trustees, it was presented for approval to council. Uh, if, at, the, the one thing about having a strategic plan in place is that if at some future point, the library wants to apply for grant money, if we come up with something that, uh, that we really need much more in donations than we can get from our friends and, and foundation, um, having a, uh, well-crafted strategic plan is absolutely a necessity when applying for grants. And so, um, maybe it just looks like extra paperwork or, or busy work. I don't, I don't see it as such. I think it helps to cement in everyone's minds what our, what our purpose is, what our, what our goals are for the, for the coming five years. And, uh, and I, I just don't think it's a bad idea to have it in place. So I'd, I'd like to see at some point, in the future, Steve, if we could get this added to the agenda.
Thank you, Linda. Kathy has something she wants to say.
Yeah, um, thank you for bringing this up, Linda. Um, I do want you to know that it is, um, absolutely on my radar. I, um, ran across the strategic plan. I, I do know that it, um, expired and that there, uh, my question to existing staff as well as city manager was, you know, what level of reporting, uh, ha- happened during that time, that five-year time period? Obviously COVID, uh, you know, sort of disrupted the final two years. Uh, it clearly does need to be updated. I intend on including this, um, as a, uh, goal for the next fiscal year. It's not going to be possible that we actually even work on it as a staff until we get fully staffed, as well as we give everybody an opportunity to get, um, acclimated to their positions. So that clearly takes us well in through the end of this fiscal year. So the goal will be to work on it and get it updated. Hopefully for second quarter of next fiscal year.
Linda, I completely agree with you, the value of having this. And, and I wanted to take a moment to thank Liz again, uh, for forwarding on the information, uh, that, based on last week's meeting, she was able to dig up the, uh, information. We had the strategic plan for twenty-eighteen and, and Brian's work plan. And, uh, I think she's been very helpful in putting information so that Kathy gets up to speed on, on where we have stood in the past on this. But yeah, I'm, uh, as, as a ex-management person, I'm, I'm a firm believer in having a plan and knowing where you're going to go. It's, it's kind of important. Liz, did you want to say something else?
Kathy, did you get, uh, the email that had the update from, um, two thousand nineteen on the strategic plan, like the update on the goals?
Um, I believe there are some written in the, uh, budget document that I would imagine marry with that. Was that an email that came from you last week?
I said, I'll resend it today. What it is, is it's, um, a spreadsheet that we created using, uh, and went through all the goals of the strategic plan and listed them. And then the staff had a column where they updated what they had done to reach those goals.
Oh, okay.
And the August one wasn't updated.
That was from two thousand nineteen. And then from Brian Hayward, I sent you his work plan. And that included, um, some language from the strategic goals and then, but more specifically, what were they doing to achieve those goals? I'll resend those to you today.
That's okay. I'm sure, I, I have it. I know I have you.
Okay. Well, I could have made a mistake in sending it. Don't, you know, and then this spectrum issue in town, Kathy, don't worry.
Yeah, maybe the council could do something about our, our cable and internet services.
Free Wi-Fi for all.
The parents of the school.
Could you add, add that to the budget, please?
Yeah, yeah, I think it, a lot of people, they put, and it, I've seen this in communities too, and, and I, I'm sure Kathy will, will disagree because everything got done in, in Lowdi that she, and other places she wanted to get done. But you, a lot of work is put into coming up with plans and then like, good, our work's done. And they walk away. You gotta execute the plan. It's gotta get finished. So I, I think that's one thing that, that this group particularly is, uh, is geared towards doing is not just craft a plan, but make sure it actually happens.
I absolutely concur. I know that planning documents are valuable and I will, I absolutely agree. But we do need to get fully staffed. But we do need to get fully staffed.
Yes.
Or we're able to actually have the right people internally to be, to be able to look back historically five years as well as work with the stakeholders, the board, as well as the foundation and the friends and, and make sure it's a good comprehensive planning effort.
Well, and as, as we said earlier too, we've, we've got, we've got new people coming on board. A new librarian is going to offer fresh perspective and, and innovative ideas that will help move us forward. I interrupted someone else. Who was that?
Well, it was, Steve, it was me. I just wanted to, to make a, a point here, you know, talking about, you know, what was done historically. If you wait until the next fiscal year, the two people that are on the Board of Trustees that have historical memory will be gone. And in the past.
Like we're going to be dead.
Well, but I, but I'm very busy filling up my travel calendar right now. The, I, I, I just wanted to say too, and I know that I did say we did this with the help of, of the city manager and staff, but the trustees did most of the, most of the work on the strategic plan. Just to be clear on that, and quite often what we would do, I mean, we started with what, with the old plan, red, you know, took a red pen and crossed out everything that had been accomplished that we didn't need, had the bare bones and then started adding to it. And we would take it a section at a time per meeting. And so it was spaced out over some time. But quite honestly, I think the process of doing that, I can't see it happening efficiently on Zoom. I, I really think we, we need to be at a table and, you know, with our papers spread out. And I think we could get an awful lot accomplished quickly. But I, I would just, just want to mention that, you know, this is the last fiscal year for some of us to be on the trustees.
My, it is my hope that the January 24th meeting would be an in-person meeting. That's almost two months from now. So fingers crossed the city changes and allows us to meet in person. We're, we're certainly, certainly all thirsting for that. Any other items anyone wanted to bring up?
No.
With, let's see, written communications, public rights distributed or any public comments, any other? This is the time for anyone else to speak up who's joined the call. I don't think anyone's joined the call, Kristin, have they? Oh, you're muted, Kristin. Sorry.
I think it's only city staff that have joined the call.
Okay, great. All right. If there are no other comments, questions, we will adjourn the meeting and convene back January 24th at 8:00 AM. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Good meeting.
How's it, everybody?